Good evening, the City of Plymouth City Council regular meeting for Thursday, July 14th is now called to order. Coronavirus advisory pursuant to Assembly Bill AB 361, the meeting will be held in person and via teleconference electronically. In-person participation by the public is permitted and remote electronic public participation is also available in the following ways. Via Zoom, the information is listed on the agenda at the city's website. Members of the public participating electronically via this link and wishing to speak may do so during a public comment by using the raised hand feature in the Zoom weather bar. When dialing into Zoom at the phone number listed above, on phone use star nine to raise and lower your hand. Use star six to mute and unmute your phone. You may submit a written public comment prior to the meeting by emailing your comment to deputy city clerk at the listed email address before 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Emailed public comments will be distributed to City Council and may part of the official minutes. Could we please have a roll call? Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Stiff.
Present.
Councilmember Amoruso.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman here and Mayor Pinefield are absent today. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the free republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no invocation for tonight. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda for tonight's meeting?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I say that.
Councilmember Alford. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Aye.
Councilmember Amoruso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye, thank you.
Number three, public comment under Government Code Section 54954.3. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker's submittal form to the city clerk. We're following the COVID-19 advisory instructions noted on the first page of this agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and community of residence, but doing so is not required. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Is there any public comment for items not on the agenda? Anybody here at City Hall?
Good evening, Captain Mark Jukes of Animal Fire here on behalf of Chief Flight. It could be here tonight personally to give you guys a quick update on the calls we've run for the past month of June. First and foremost, the electrifier current containment on that is 97%. Acreage is up to 4,478 acres. As a comparison, the fire in 2015, which started roughly at the same spot by quarter mile away, grew to about 70,000 acres, 7868 acres in total. The fire, we've 400 homes were lost and two lives were lost. The electrifier, zero homes were lost, no lives lost. We had a few significant factors in our favor this time around. We'll learn here in the year, higher humidity is much cooler weather and in general a better plan due to the recent fire history. Some key takeaways, the incident management teams, both the Sacramento Region Three Incident Management Team and then the CalFire Type One Team Three. So basically the teams that manage the incident on a larger scale can bring in more resources and a heavier response rapidly. Or rapidly, as you guys noticed, incident command also set up here pretty quickly. Appreciate one who made sacrifices with the increased traffic and other inconveniences of having that kind of a production room in the town. So we couldn't do it without that facility, so appreciate that. And also as another note, the station there on Sherwood Street was used as extra housing for search personnel. At the peak of Animal Fire's response, we had 11 personnel dedicated to the incident, which is roughly one third of our personnel were actively fighting the fire. And during that time, we were able to maintain staffing at all of our other stations at appropriate levels. Units assigned from Animal Fire included four engines, two water tenders and one chief officer. Great, real quick, any questions on that? For other news from Animal Fire, I just completed a two-class series or it's called the Driver/Operator Series, each class is 40 hours each to train up additional personnel to be able to drive and operate fire engines, water tenders. So we increased our ability to get those extra pieces of equipment out the door when needed. As far as calls for June, in the City of Plymouth, we have 14 calls total. We had one structured fire, 10 calls from medical aid, one gas leak, one that dissed once, smoke check. And then as you know, our station in Plymouth also covers what we call Battalion 20 area up to the town, October Creek. In those areas, this engine company ran an additional 35 calls, three ventilation fires, one structure fire, one traffic collision, 19 medical blades, three that dissed, one gas leak, one smoke check, and we were dispatched and canceled six times. So no questions on any of that, and your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Jukes.
That John Overton, good evening, I owe you. I did want to bring up something that I observed during this, the fire events. There was a fire right across from our house and there was a truck that drove down that highway and the woman talked to me, I said, do you guys have a permit or we want to save? He says, well, we can, it's a emergency, we'll take one, we got a reward. I said, well, you learn what the bad meter on that one. You said, we get a reward, we get personal cost point. And he said, well, we take whatever we want. And then he said, well, I said, if you report, they'll come back to fire command and he just, yeah, I'm doing that. I don't think that he was. And so there's certainly needs to be, so they were not going to take water out of there, they were taking water in. I got no information else. And it's not that we don't want to support the event, but if CalFire's, they know the state, there's fresh writers, they shouldn't cut the people who pay for the water. We don't need to get there, the retail side, we need to be, we need to replace it, come.
John, can I speak to this way? I'm already been in touch with CalFire. They know that there was some, this absolute taking water and they've already got me in contact with the people that can negotiate a payment for us because of the confusion. So CalFire has been amazing to work with and they were trying to make us whole. And we just, I'm working with them to get through the process so that we can receive monies and funds from CalTrans to make up for the water that was pulled at Pacific Street and at Empire Street. They are 100% in agreement to reimburse us.
If they don't have a care, they reflect you from Kenya, which I do have fingers chirping right.
And they've also asked, we have an alternative way that we can look at water usage and try to determine how much they. So they've been 100% trying to make it right.
Okay.
Is there anybody else here at City Hall who would like to make a public comment?
Good evening, my name is Craig Williams. I'm the producer of the Challenge of Champions ice cream rodeo we have every year. And I want to thank you folks for your generosity this year and the few of key funds that you helped us out with. The event was a success, some hurdles to overcome, but it worked out very nicely. Also, we'd like to have the opportunity to request for next year another aid from your funds if it's within your budget. So I will do the paperwork appropriate and follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, do you mind tapping the mic over somebody? Thank you. Anybody else from City Hall would like to make some public comments? Anybody on Zoom who would like to make public comments? No hands raised at this time. Any emails or correspondence received? No, okay. Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, presentations, 4.1. We have a proclamation of appreciation and acknowledgement of Selby Beck for 20-plus years of service to the City of Plymouth and the Plymouth community. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Amoruso to please read the proclamation.
Do I get up and read it with him or just read from here?
Do it.
You can go down.
Do we have something to present to you?
Yeah, you come down and do it like Bill, right?
Come on up, tell me.
Make sure you can't.
Okay.
So. So whereas proclamation to acknowledge, recognize Selby Albeck for his more than 25 years of service at City Hall. Whereas Selby Beck has served this community as a member of City Council Mayor and panelists for selection of planning commissioners, maintenance supervisor, public works, director, superintendent and public works. Whereas these more than 25 years of service have been marked by supplementary dedication to the best interest of our community. Whereas work constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural and educational development. And whereas the City of Plymouth has benefited greatly because of his particular expertise and interest in the City Council and public works. And whereas throughout the performance of his duties and responsibilities as a member of the City Council Public Works Manager, he has made excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our city. And whereas Selby Beck has earned the admiration of high regards of those with whom he has come into contact and his fellow public servants and staff, he has hired, trained and mentored. Whereas Selby Beck has earned respect of the residents of Plymouth who frequently seek his consultation advice relating to solutions. Seek his consultation and advice relating to solutions to a variety of community issues and how therefore be resolved in recognition of his many contributions to our city. Its citizens, we hereby express our deep appreciation for his dedication, the progress of this community. Being further be resolved, this proclamation will remind the citizens of Plymouth of the commitment and leadership that Selby Albeck brings to our community. The foregoing proclamation was duly passed and adopted by the City Council, the City of Plymouth, California on the 14th day of July of 2023. Congratulations.
Under the circumstances, can I ask if there's any council members who would like to say anything or make a comment or?
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask if I could say something. Us who've been in Plymouth forever and a billion years and all that stuff, I don't know, we kind of look at it. And I don't know, it's personality traits and everything. I think Selby instills what Plymouth is all about. I think Selby, I mean, if you want a leader at something that shows what you're, you know, what you're about, what your mission's about, Selby's definitely that champion. Enjoyed, I know my parents have Selby for a lot longer than I have, but I've enjoyed, you know, when I start to get coffee in the morning to say, hey, how's it going, just talking about life, just what a super individual.
I'm new to Plymouth the last few years, but I've always been told if you need to know something about what's what the past or something you fix or how to fix it or where to get it, you always call Selby. Obviously, he has the keys to this town, he knows where things are. He knows where, this whole term, where all the bodies are buried. You'll always need a person like that. Like you have a problem, you go to Selby. Selby, thank you very much. Yes, he's our historic member, that's for sure. Thank you, Captain Selby, for all your years.
And I've also heard the same wonderful things. Haven't had a chance to work with you much, but I remember meeting you when I first decided to run for the council. And I always hear wonderful things about you, so congratulations. Is there anybody from the public who would like to say anything?
Well, they wouldn't be right if I didn't get to say something, right? Selby really epitomizes the people of Plymouth, the old timers of Plymouth. He's been around for a long time, he knows where the bodies are buried. He's really given his all for the city in every way he possibly could, always. And I showed up tonight specifically to see him and to tell him how grateful I am for all he did to help me when I was the city manager here and everything he's done for its community. And it might be fitting if you mark July 14th next year to Selby Beck Day in the City of Plymouth. It's amazing. Thank you, John.
Anybody else say comments?
I'd like to make some comments representing the staff. Selby has been an amazing mentor. I would not be where I am now without Selby. And I think I'm very confident in saying that everyone in public works thinks Selby is an amazing leader and has really allowed us to grow so much as staff under him. And he's just a truly amazing individual. Thank you, Selby, for everything.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Senator Overton, I've worked with Selby probably 50 years, I mean, I've done everything I've ever done in my time that he was on the seat at Council, like playing commissioner and things. And it leaves a big void in influence right now with the absence of Selby. It was needed that you got, if you hadn't got to the service, a leak somewhere to do about it. Where, when, the location, when the punch, everything. Even on the issue I had with, I don't know. Where I could have reported that to, and Selby wasn't available. And anyway, he was dedicated to the city in such a large, large way. It was a pretty generous to afford the facilities in these years.
Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything? Okay, I'm going to ask for another round of applause. And it looks like item 4.2 is an AWA general manager presentation regarding state and local drought regulations. Vice Mayor, the person, Flora McKinney, the GM from AWI, is not available to be here tonight unfortunately, so we're going to try to reschedule for her. Okay, thank you. So moving on to the consent calendar items. 5.1 is the approval of revised meeting minutes. 5.2, approval of meeting minutes of June 23rd. 5.3 correspondence not received. And 5.4 to adopt the resolution, AB 361, renewal of virtual meetings. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Say again.
Councilmember Alford. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff. Councilmember Amoruso. Vice Mayor Ackerman. Aye, thank you. Moving on to item 6, public hearings. Item 6.1 is Resolution 2022-16, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Plymouth authorizing the placement of unpaid delinquent sewer service and water bills upon the Amador County property tax roll. Could we just have a staff report, do we have a staff report for that?
Well, this is, could that public hearing, Councilwoman.
A staff report? There is a staff report, I'm sorry, I took you in, I didn't.
So typically, Chapter 13.25, collection on tax roll requires City Council to hold a hearing and a final conclusion of the hearing. Council will adopt revised change, reduce or modify any change or overrule any or all objections since Selby makes determination of one each charge. The scriving result shall be final. If Council holds a charge in any amount, City Clerk will take the appropriate action to place the charges on the assessment roll. All of this is based on. Sorry. It's based on the City of Plymouth staff is authorized, is outlined in Chapter 13.25 of the Plymouth Municipal Code to place delinquent sewer and water balances upon the Amador County property tax rolls for the fiscal year 2223, property year for the following properties and the city manager is authorized to take such actions necessary to implement this placement.
As far as public comments, are there any public comments from anybody here in City Hall?
Vice Mayor, just to clarify, it's a public hearing, so after you receive the presentation, open the public hearing, take comment or whatever helps the public has been for consideration of the council and then you'll close the public hearing and then you'll take it back to the council.
Thank you, so I'd like to open it now for public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. Now that the public hearing is open, is there any public comment? Please come up.
Well, I believe I have, I think I have a delinquent water bill, but I don't know what to do about it. I bought a house in front of Mobile Manor and it belonged to somebody I knew and they lived in another state. And I fixed it up, but sell it. But when I came down here and told somebody that I wanted to pay the bill, they told me that I couldn't do it without the permission of the waterhouse management company. And I asked their manager about it. He didn't bring me any paperwork, I kept asking him why. And this is the one from here. And I'm wondering, what am I supposed to do if somebody wants to buy this house? What should I do? You're going to put this on a tax bill and I pay it? Or what? Maybe nobody can help you with that.
This is not my, this is not my complete expertise, this would be choice. But I can tell you that being in the Mahone Park, things are a little different because the property itself is owned by what individual or what group of individuals and the actual homes that are on the sites are owned by different individuals. That's part of the reason why you were told to go to the management company. But I understand that didn't work out for you, but that's why it's a little more confusing. That's why it's a little more confusing. And, you know, I'm not sure if this is gonna fall upon you or if it's gonna fall upon the owners of the Mubalum, excuse me, Mubalum Park. I would be channeled Joyce on that.
Joyce, yeah, I did ask one of the meter readers, and he said that waterhouse management was paying. I mean, I don't have any problem with somebody else paying my bill. Joyce wants to talk. So what should I do?
But can we get some comments from Joyce who's in Zoom with her hand raised?
Hi, sir. So you can pay on the bill if you want, anybody can pay on anyone's bill. But if you wouldn't like to set up an account, we can talk about that at a later time.
Okay, what time would that be?
When would you like to schedule? If you can give me a call at City Hall, select number one, which is water sewer, and I will schedule an appointment with you.
Oh, okay, then I'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for your...
Can you state your name and...
Do you want my name?
Just for the record.
My name's Donald James Spitzer. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here at City Hall who would like to make a comment? I think not.
There's only two people up in the room.
Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to provide a public comment for the public hearing, or having a 6.1? I don't see any hands raised. Do we have a... Do we have any emails or correspondence on this that have ever seen? No. Okay. And Dana, nobody on Zoom that wants to comment?
No.
So I'll close this, I'll close this for public hearing then. And do the council members have any comments?
Okay.
So do we have a, would anybody like to make a motion for this item? Or do you have staff direction? Excuse me, Councilman, I make a suggestion.
Sure.
Please.
We do have the option of removing that gentleman's item from here, give him the opportunity to work with staff under the circumstances and moving forward with all the rest of them if you would so choose to do something like that.
Yeah.
You can modify.
Yeah. What was his name yet? It's what?
Donald with an S.
It's something.
Joyce. Write name in later.
Joyce has a comment.
Joyce, okay, Joyce. Where are you going?
Joyce, do you have a comment?
For the trailer park, that the debt is the debt of the land and not the household. So it's the debt of the space.
So the management company has to pay it?
Well, the property owner is the one that's responsible for it in our eyes.
Okay.
So it's not on the debt of the house. So it won't go to his property taxes.
Oh, gotcha. Right, right.
If he's even on there, I don't know if he has a delinquent account right now as it is. My suggestion would be to keep it as it is for that property. And...
If it gets paid, then it gets paid, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Has until August 9th to have everything paid up.
So you need to be cleared up at that point. Thank you, Joyce.
If there's no other comments, would anybody, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve of Resolution 2022-16A, resolution of the City Council of the City of Plymouth authorizing the placement of unpaid delinquent sewer service and water bills on the Amador County property tax roll. I'll say that.
Roll call votes. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff.
Aye.
Councilmember Murriso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Aye.
Item 7.1, Resolution 2022-17 of the City Council of the City of Plymouth to submit two measures to the voters of City of Plymouth at the November 8, 2022 statewide general election to convert the positions of city clerk and city treasurer from elected to an appointed position. Do we have a staff report for that?
We do. The reason we're bringing this before you is that, quite honestly, since we lost Boris Dard several years ago, we have had difficulty in filling the city clerk position. It leaves a big void for us on that. And staff is trying to do our best we can. Many cities in the state of California, two-thirds at this point have changed the treasurer and city clerk positions to appointed positions, like you would appoint a planning commissioner. And it has a stipend included in that, which we are not suggesting we change any of that. We just feel that it would help us to actually get individuals into these positions that want to be doing those activities, that want to learn. It gets kind of complex, just having random people come in. I think some of them get overwhelmed and we don't get a lot of state power. So this way, we can allow the council to have more of an opportunity to step in and appoint somebody that they feel is dedicated to learning and doing those positions. And that's all we're really requesting, we're not requesting any other changes other than being able to do it that way as opposed to running ballots with nobody even running for the position. The other thing I wanted to mention too is, we want to do this so that in the elections in 2024, we can appoint instead of elect, it wouldn't affect anything that's happening as of the moment right now.
And if I may just add, since I'm the city, or with the city, and I wasn't here when Flora was here, at least as it relates to the city clerk, I know that the council effectively appointed that person anyways because we had vacancies, so under state law, you have a vacancy in an elected position. You fill that by appointment, just like you would if someone on the council, you have a vacancy on the council, you could, you'd fill that by appointment. You could call special election, but most cities practically don't do that because it's just too expensive and it's too difficult. So I guess what I'm saying is kind of the recent history is, it's been a de facto appointment anyways.
And to build on that, there's been some comments out there saying that basically, you know, this has already been done once, it failed by 53% last year. But that was due to the language, people didn't understand what they were voting on. And so it was not worded properly. So that's another reason I think why this is coming back. So there can be worded more, so people can understand what they're actually looking for, why they need to avoid versus, we just need to do this. Yeah, because it was kind of a vague statement last time. So that's, there's some clarification. That makes sense? Fairly, I'm basing, I'm basing that statement.
Well, I don't know what happened last time as far as the votes, but what you're saying, the ballot question, you were confused by the ballot question?
Yes, I heard that very well.
I don't know if that can get any better.
Right.
Because I think state law prescribes a form of the ballot question for this measure specifically. So it's actually the form of a question that isn't a, it's not just something like, shall the city clerk position be appointed? Or shall the city clerk mayor or position be appointed? I think that's a skin we have to live in just for purposes state law.
Gotcha.
But I think education will go a long way.
Right, I think, I guess that's where I was going with it. We have to put some education out there so people can stand what they're voting on locally versus, you know, just saying, oh, heck no. We've been talking about this for a thousand years.
Frank, if it goes from being an elected position, that the person would have to live in the City of Plymouth, an appointed person could live outside the city. Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be a larger base of people that take them to take that job versus having to live in the city of Plymouth?
Yeah, I mean...
But then, but then...
There's more people outside the city attending the city, so for sure, I mean, that maybe you'd be able to cast a wider net. And I think that's probably, I'm guessing that's been one of the issues in the past is they've been limited to folks that are living here. Living here, yeah.
Well, and I also want, also want to understand, I mean, right now, as it sits, I mean, we're paying real to be a clerk basis, basically, for all intents and purposes, plus we're paying that young fellow, theater boss a lot to do nothing because he doesn't compete, he comes in the size of papers. Yeah, something like that, yeah. So I think I should probably save some money. Get rid of that other part of that pay position that would just count for the first job, as it sits already.
I guess since we're all talking, I'll add to this. When it was put on the last ballot, Rex and I did a lot of talking about this.
That's true.
And of course, everyone has said, the city, it seemed like a purge going in and out, in and out, in and out. And I understand, I do agree with Peter, I'm supporting for it. I would agree with, yes, it's already been on the agenda, I just don't think the education for why it's on the agenda without knowing, yeah, on the ballot, or, I'm sorry, ballot. But this has been something that's been talked about for, well, at least two years now. It was on the last ballot. And I, I don't know, I just think, and I'm not trying to push my ideas procedure or whatever, but I just think it, it did have enough wind behind it sails, if that's a good way to say it. So that's just quite interesting. And we're talking November 2023, right?
The election would be this election in November 2022. 2022.
It's 2022, so it wouldn't affect 2024, that's right.
Yes.
Not, not 2024.
It would affect until in 2024 at all.
Oh, I think.
Yeah.
And is anybody, what is, if I'm gonna ask, what is the stipend, how much is the stipend? Does anybody know off the top of their head how that works?
What's that on? I have that story. Huh? I mean, I'll keep here. What's that? Bye, okay. So it's around about so... Wrong.
Okay, are there any public comments for item 6.1? Anybody here in City Hall?
Crickets.
Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make a comment on item 6.1?
No hands are raised.
Have we received any correspondence on this item? 7.1, thank you, 7.1.
I did not receive it.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Any other staff comments? Do we have a, would anybody like to make a motion on this item?
You put your glasses on, I don't know. I'll make the motion. 7.1, Resolution 2022-17 of the City Council of the City of Plymouth to submit two measures to the voters of the City of Plymouth at the November 8, 2022 statewide general election to convert the positions of city clerk and city treasurer from elected to an appointed position.
I'll say that.
Roll call vote. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff.
Aye.
Councilmember Murriso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, I agree. Aye, thank you. Item 7.2, Resolution Number 2022-14 of the City Council of the City of Plymouth adopting a project list for fiscal year 2022-23 estimated at $22,255 funded by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Do we have a staff report? We have staff report. So... Excuse me. The funding for the SB 1 Road Repair and Accountability Act, we, we have worked this late with all the transitions. If we don't submit a project list tonight in approval, then we will not be eligible for fundings for this year. I suggested the intersection of Poplar, Locust and Bill because that is the area that we have received the most public concerns and complaints. In town, it wasn't something that was just arbitrarily chosen. Staff is aware that there's issues there, and like I said, there's been a lot of community talk about that general area. So that's why that was picked, I believe, this is new to me. I believe that as long as we submit a project list, we're eligible for funding, and I think we can be flexible at a later time as to if that's exactly what we use of funding or not. But I can't tell you 400% of the story.
For clarification. They require an approved resolution during the regular meeting in order to proceed in consideration.
Tonight.
Yes, we are actually behind time there. They are trying to allow us a little bit of extended time. We're in, and reached out and have shown them that we do have this in process. So as long as this can go through tonight, we will be eligible to receive funding for the year.
Funding this year?
Yes.
So if we use a particular project, for example, and turns out that we want to use the money for other things, you weren't positive, if we can change the criteria of the project versus use it for that particular item, we could put it on three or four other items? In lieu of possibly?
You're really putting me on the...
No, I'm putting you up.
I'm in a learning curve right now.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Like I said, that...
Well, we have to choose something, obviously.
We have to choose something or we lose it.
I think we do.
And like I said, the choice was made based on a majority of community input that public workers has heard. We have not received that many inquiries, concerns regarding any other traffic areas in town right now. So it seemed like the best fit for such a short-term decision. Like I said, I think there might be some flexibility, but I really have to get a chance to research that out.
Doesn't sound like we have, we have the opportunity to research if you have a major time.
Right, I mean, when I wrote up the list, I knew I was under the gun and I had to come up with something really fast. And that just seemed like the most logical choice. Do we have any public comments for item 7.2? Anybody here in City Hall? Anybody here in City Hall? So anybody on Zoom who would like to make a comment? Any other, uh, comments from council members, council member Ambrose? I forgot to ask, do we have any, uh, did we receive any correspondence on this item seven point two?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember White, any comments?
I don't like losing money. Exactly, so that's just my opinion on it.
I, I agree, we, we throw the dice. You, you use that project as, as go to. If we have another, I mean, obviously the last minute, we can't make up a bunch of projects. And, uh, to me, it's, it makes more sense.
Yeah.
Would somebody like to make a motion for this item?
Excuse me.
Okay. I'll take my glasses off.
I made a motion to approve the resolution, uh, from September. Uh, resolution number two zero two two dash fourteen of City Council, City of Plymouth, to adopt a project list fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three estimated at two 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 five five dot zero zero funded by Senate Bill One, Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand seventeen. Just a second. Second.
Call vote. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Sim.
Aye.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Aye.
Vice Mayor. Ackerman.
Aye.
Item seven point three, discussion regarding TOT application and committee review process and possible council appointment of a committee representative per council member or other possible direction. And could we please have a staff report? Yes, the staff is basically looking for correction from council. Uh, there was a TOT policy developed and put in place. I believe it was prior to COVID and, uh, since COVID, it's, it's kind of kind of dispersed, I guess we could say, um, as far as committee members and things. Um, we have had an application come in. It has come in based on the policy guidelines. Uh, it would qualify to be reviewed at this point in time along the schedule for the fourth quarter. It came in before July first. Um, on this schedule, it would go to an advisory committee in July and council review on August. We're just not sure where to go with this because I don't believe we actually have the grant program committee still in place, or if it's in place, it's missing several members. And now that we have this application, we need to know if council plans on continuing with the, uh, the policy that they had had in the past with a review committee or if they want to look at some other option or possibly choose to look at, we only received one in this time period. If the council may want to just choose to look at this themselves since the committee is not, um, well-established right now.
So, you're right, I think it disbanded. I was never a big fan of that mostly because I think it's clumsy on the wider levels. And ultimately, it's our decision to do it today. You know, I mean, it's just another hurdle. And we don't have a flood of people coming here asking for grant funds. So I, I, I think the last couple of them come through because of the, the committee not being, you know, still there. It's just kind of straight to us, you know, direction, bring it straight to us. Goes over to five thousand. So I'm kind of saying just go, go back there. Yeah, why, why make these hurdles to make it super, super difficult? Why is everybody spent if it's not whole, if it's proper? If it's not, we say, they get a mistake.
So you're suggesting disbanding the committee that's already kind of disbanded?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah.
So my, my thing is, you know, the wheel, the wheel was broken. Because it worked for a lot of, a lot of years, we got a lot of good things done. Most of it does come back to us at the end of the day. This is longer, more hurdles. Now we find that we have a huge uptake and and then we might have to relocate, so that's on the road. We're doing some kind of hybrid program.
Are we gonna set a timeline where they come in at a certain time?
Certain year, right, yeah.
Prior to their, uh, their function?
Yeah, or we do, do two times a year, spring and fall. Yeah, they do apply. Just my two cents on it. The, the whole time I've been on council, this keeps on making a different form on the agenda. Comes in in a different pattern every time. This, this, you're like, I'm going, man, we, yeah, what I saw, it's like, TOT again, what? This has been a blessing and, and, and
It's been a blessing and a curse, and I don't want to point fingers or call any association out or anything of that nature.
Yeah.
But we had a large facility that would qualify under the TOT tax thing, and it became a go ask the city of Plymouth to get money.
Right.
Have your, go ask it, and that's when we started looking at different ways of going about it. Uh, let's just say leadership has changed at that facility, and I don't think that's gonna be the case. So going back to what we used to do in a lot of ways, like Peter said, it's not broken. I mean, we're getting heard at this event, that event, car for this, that. I mean, it seemed like every meeting we'd have a line of people standing up on public comment going, hey, can I get, you know, five thousand for this, can I get, you know? And it was just like, whoa, wait, let's, let's, we can not cap these people out if we had an advisory committee before. Uh, I don't think that's the case. It's kind of changed. I could be wrong, but, um, I think the work out that we weren't just gonna be, uh, this year's not their problem. No. Um, you know, that's kind of my basic. I think if you put one council member on, on the committee and stuff to, I, I would be, you know, this is, I'm trying to, now, I don't think you people, you know, that Mickey Sue's birthday party didn't get, uh, didn't get TOT funding and so and so's did. I, that's not a good position to be at, yeah.
Is there anybody from, uh, do we have any public comments on this item? Here in City Hall? No. Uh, any public comments on Zoom? Have we received any public comments via correspondence?
No.
Personally, I, I am in favor of the idea of the deadlines. I think, I think that's important. I support disbanding the committee that's already disbanded. And then, um, I don't, I don't see anywhere in here, but maybe to the policy itself of a limit, okay?
I don't think there's any limits, we could, we we, if it's, it's discretionary money, it's like we can, if we find or deem that it's a worthy cause, we can give it what else we like, or we say, no, we need to break down to this amount, or we operate.
Can the city manager have a
Five thousand?
Five thirty, a little, five thousand, and above that, I'd say come to council. Right there, a week later, yeah, which is crazy.
So does the council want to give staff direction? This, this also, also seems like it might be timely to consider more conversation on this when we're looking at a budget. Uh, but does any, does council want to give staff any direction on this?
I'd say bring it to the next meeting. And what? Whatever she has coming. Whatever's on that.
The request.
Yeah, the request.
For the request.
Yeah, keep that going for August. Correct, what is that, as I mentioned, is that two layups? No, this is first hall.
Okay.
Does staff want to give, uh, I mean, does council want to give staff any direction on this item and the
Well, I'm with you, I agree.
The, the application.
I'm with you, I agree that, you know, like I said, there's gotta be some kind of timelines because, you know, I think that helps keep things kind of organized and we're not getting hit every meeting for something, so we have to break it down, four quarters or
Yeah, I mean, six months too long.
Yeah. So, I'm moving four quarters, and that's fine, you know, whatever makes it. But then we hear them all at one time, once a quarter. That would be more doable.
Okay.
Agendize it for future with more detail.
Staff have any questions or?
Yeah, I like, I think, I think we ought to agendize it at a future featuring with, with a little more detail as to what, uh, we're looking at. Not the committee, but give the, uh, city manager a budget, something. For, in the, in the past, at five thousand dollars, anything above that has to come to council.
Yeah.
With a three or four month timeline.
I just want to make sure before any directions given that it's as clear as possible because I feel like this, we just had this conversation a couple of months ago. And I started happening to learn to meet them, and I was like, what was the outcome of that? Uh, so I think whatever it is, uh, just, we're gonna press to get some clear direction and, uh, uh, as far as what to do with whatever potential applications are out there in the meantime, and then also what to do with your current policy. Uh, because that may, if that is disbanded, one's gonna have to actually come back as a resolution to basically repeal the policy. Um, that would be formal, a form, a formal action would have to be taken later. Council will give staff direction to come back to repeal it.
Right.
Um, or to to repeal it and then also replace it with maybe a few stipulations if, if, if the council wants to come back. Uh, the, the future applications to come directly to accountable side is want to throw it out there so council can see that, what the, the direction will look like.
That's a great, that's a great.
Okay, everybody in agreement, ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay.
We have time to a public.
Uh, I think I opened, I think I asked a public.
I, I'm sorry, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Um.
You wear it.
Item seven point four. Excuse me, Vice Mayor. Uh, I need to say this, but to me, um, it's kind of clear as mud right now.
Oh, it kind of is.
I, I have this application. Uh, it would really be nice if you could tell me, uh, settle it or bring it to us. I really kind of feel like, uh, the applicant, you know, was trying to do the right thing following the rules that were in the policy. And I, my opinion just is, they should, you know, be addressed.
You have, you have a current application now?
Yes, and, and we're literally just sitting on it, that's why this came back. It was more because the application came in under, um, the direction of the policy. And we kind of wanted to find out, uh, what we could do because we didn't want to just
What's, what's the timeline of this particular application?
Uh, well, according to your, your past schedule, uh, it would be up for council review in August, which I mean, we're right in the right timeframe to address it. It's the only one that came up, um, under the fourth quarter. Uh, so that would, if, if we could address this one, that would have, uh, give us time um, for council to decide how they want to take this, um, as far as if they want to change a policy or anything like that, but we could still address this one that's, that's in a holding pattern right now.
Is it more than five thousand dollars?
Uh, no, I don't believe it is, oops, no, I don't believe it is. I believe it's around three. Yeah.
So what we already have, that should be able, you guys should be able to address that, correct?
Well, right now, theoretically, you have power, it's under five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You have the power to grant it. You don't need us. I don't, I don't, I, I know that you don't want to hear that.
Well, actually, she doesn't. I'll say why, because we had adopted a policy that required to go through a certain process. So that is, has to be right along the authority that, uh, Councilmember Ambrose was referring to, it's, it's right in the sense that she has five thousand dollars purchasing authority as the city manager under our purchasing man, our purchasing code.
I thought it was also with the TOT.
Yeah, no, because Rex gave five thousand dollars.
But I agree with the policy, though, even stuff under five thousand dollars had to go through a committee.
I don't think so.
And then it goes to council for approval.
I don't think so.
I thought you, I thought you was bringing us the one that were over five thousand.
Yeah, if it's five thousand or under, he, he he, he asked, he had to
Be to the committee.
No, Rex did.
I thought, I thought the issue was he, he approved them.
Okay. If it was five and over, it had to go to a committee and come to us.
Yes.
That's how, that's how it's process.
That's how I understood it, um, yeah.
But, but for this particular request that you have now, it sounds like you'd like to bring it to the council in August? I personally prefer to do that right now because it is, it's just one.
Is that considered an emergency? Is that legal, I guess, if she brought that to us?
Yeah, I mean, if council gives her the direction to do that in the interim by the city, yeah, that's, that, it's legal to me, it's council's game, and I'll
That's a fair
So is it a little bit more clear? It's much more clear, thank you. The policy itself. So do we want to agendize it at our next meeting?
Yes, I think so. For potential
Or a future agenda, or a future agenda.
Yeah, just a future agenda.
But that'll come up.
Something.
Anyone can say that.
In the meantime, prove, approve a three thousand dollar.
Well, we'll see.
No, we'll see what's
Not tonight?
No, not tonight.
That, that's kind of the reason why I would like you to look at it because that's something I've never done before. And I don't want to be overly generous with the city's money of the, not a lot of experience of doing that. Fair enough. We ready to move on to item seven point four?
Sure.
Alright, item seven point four, to authorize and approve acting city manager Johnson's hourly pay of sixty dollars per hour retroactive to June sixteen. And, there a staff report on this? There is.
There is, uh, council gave direction at the last council meeting to, uh, discuss, uh, making, they appointed Ms. Johnson as the active CM for the city while we conducted an improvement. And they wanted to make sure she got paid, you know, with parity relative to prior interim CM, so, uh, that's what this attempt is, uh, doing, it's sixty dollars per hour. Uh, that was what Mr. Chapman was making. My goal, when you looked at it, even though he's getting monthly, I think he came out to a little bit over sixty, but he also had the finance director role. So, um, and the same as Mr. Chapman, and, uh, Ms. Johnson's agreed to it. And, uh, at the last meeting, council asked to make it, um, effective as of June twenty-third, but kind of looking at it, she's assumed those acting roles since the sixteen, and so we're asking to make that pay retroactive to June sixteen.
Perfect.
Are there any public comments on item seven point four? Are there any public comments on anybody, uh, in Zoom, on Zoom? Any correspondence received on this item? Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any council comments on this item?
I asked a question. Will this work for me, Catherine?
This will work for me, thank you.
Okay.
Any comments, any comments, questions? Okay, I have none. Um, do we have a motion for this item?
I'm in motion to authorize and approve acting city manager Johnson's hourly pay of sixty dollars per hour retroactive to June sixteen, twenty-two. Second. Thank you very much.
Well, call vote. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Sim.
Aye.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye, thank you.
Item number eight, council or staff communications. Item eight point one, city managers' report. Ms. Johnson, do you have a city managers' report? Ms. Johnson, do you have a city managers' report you'd like to share?
I do. Um, I have a couple of things on my list. Uh, one I had mentioned before under public comment is, uh, I am in the commi- communication with Califier regarding the base camp using city water, uh, without any agreement. Uh, Califier has fast tracked us for negotiation or reimbursement. Um, they understand where we're coming from. They have no issue with paying for the water. It's just going to be, uh, a little bit of work to try to calculate out exactly how much water was taken. Um, so we're going to basically just have to ballpark it, but they're trying to make us whole and, uh, hopefully resolve, we've resolved this in the future. Um, they've added us into contact list with neighbor, which will probably happen, start a base camp in, uh, the fairgrounds again. We will be on the contact list from the beginning so that we can set them up with water and traffic. The other thing I have is actually also regarding water. Uh, we've had a big temperature change recently and just for your information, we've actually had three water leaks in town in the last two weeks.
Happens every year.
Yeah, and, and, you know, when you have, uh, weather changes, temperature changes that are extreme. You usually see it in winter or in summer, uh, the lights start to live and have issues, so it's not surprising. Uh, two of them were in, in the main street where it meets Old Sacramento Road. Um, we knew something where was going on there. Uh, we've been working on that one for a while. And they fixed the leak that they found and then the next day, and there was, there were actually two leaks there. They've both been repaired. We now have one, um, directly behind City Hall. And, uh, hopefully they'll get a chance to repair it tomorrow. But it, it is that time of year, so if anybody sees a wet spot somewhere in the road that wasn't there the day before, you can let us know. It, we're in that mode right now with our lines. Um, and we try to get there as fast as we can. Uh, we've got to remember though that A W A is servicing a large portion of this county and their construction crew uh, needs to prioritize things and like the one behind us, uh, we know it's there, it's a leak. It's not a major leak, they have a major leak in center group right now on a very big main line. Uh, so a lot of their resources have been there, have been there. Um, they're going to try to come and help us out tomorrow morning with the one behind City Hall. A W A is, it's usually really responsive, but like any other thing, that's kind of an emergency situation, they have to prioritize which is the biggest problem on deal. So it's asked that everyone just kind of be patient. It, it's in the loop to get done. Um, the last thing I have is regarding the fair. Uh, we, we served, uh, work from the fairgrounds, the community partnership dinner had to be rescheduled, it was originally tonight during, um, our council meeting. But they now reschedule it to August eighteenth at six P M. And I don't believe that's a council night. Uh, yes, it's not because all that is the next one. So that might give you an opportunity to do that this year, Peter. So that might give you an opportunity to attend the dinner this year.
It's a fun dinner.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great dinner.
Um, so I just wanted to make sure you are aware of that because we just got a phone call on that today.
Keith's mother cooks there.
She's not going to do this year.
She's not going to do this year?
No.
Do any council members have anything they'd like to, I'm sorry, was, was that it? Did you have more you wanted to add?
Yes, I forgot something. Uh, should put the date on that. The twenty eighth. Just a reminder, the, the twenty eighth, the council meeting has been canceled due to the fair.
Any, uh, council member reports or requests for future agenda items? Council member Amber Russo?
I have a upcoming meeting with the PD. Um, but other than that, I don't have anything. Um, future agenda items. Excuse.
Uh, excuse.
Councilmember White.
I just wanted, uh, to say thank you to the Rotary, thank you to the staff and everyone from July.
Oh, yeah.
What a cool event. Uh, thank you for Pete, Peter, for, I mean, for a child years ago. And, uh, yeah, that was, uh, that was just a lot of fun. I, I like things that explode.
Uh, Kathleen pulled it out of her butt.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Kathleen.
And a lot of Dana was hustling.
Oh, yeah. Those two girls were here all day working.
Just because, uh, corporate sponsors dinner was brought up, um, with that, uh, city managers' report. I, it's came out dinner this weekend or the next?
Yes.
Came out dinner this weekend for the fair. Too much, uh, pretty, pretty good addition. Uh, yeah, fair kind of addition. And, uh, if you can make it out to the Amber County Fair, it's one of the prettiest small town fairs you can ever make it out to, so.
Councilmember Sam.
Uh, yes, I agree that the Fourth of July parade was fabulous, was a lot of fun. Jamie, uh, Bocko, he's a terrific job, everybody. And, uh, John Culver, the space handle, the vehicles and people and so forth. It was re- always really well done, I thought was better, better than this year. Uh, I, I only want to bring up one thing that, you know, but I, I've been staying on top of the, uh, the Caltrans project, the, the bike and walking trail from Zinda Ridge Parkway down to the Grand Bug. I, I, I called them about, at least once, talked to Sam Sherman, who's the, uh, who's sitting in charge of that, that project, if I call it projects, but anyway, uh, he promised me that the, uh, project is, is, uh, moving, moving, progressing, moving on. Uh, he has told me that he will have a, uh, a design for us shortly and, uh, I don't think it's for approval because it's on their property, they're, they're building it, it's on there right away. But when I, when I get my hands on the, on the design, I will bring it to council and sort of, they can see it and, uh, talk about it and I don't know what, I don't know exactly what the procedure is, uh, whether, uh, they're going to bring it to the community in large or not. Uh, but, uh, the good news is it, it is moving on. Uh, it, we got an extension, uh, this program, it's called Beautiful, Beautify, uh, City Highways Program. Um, we've been, uh, our project has spent a lot, a million seventy thousand dollars. I think that, uh, it's something that, that will really enhance Plymouth, uh, in, in a lot of ways, as well as the, the Grand Bug. So anyway, once, once I get my, get more information, I will bring it to council and, uh, oh, by the way, they, they, they did extend the, uh, deadline from, uh, June of, uh, two thousand twenty three to November of two thousand twenty three, so, uh, that's good news. Anyway, now, that's about all I can tell you right now. Thank you.
And I just also want to say that I thought, um, Fourth of July was amazing, it was a lot of fun. Um, Dom and I were there for the parade in the morning and then, uh, again, the fireworks in the evening and it was, it was great, it was really proud to be part of Plymouth and thank you for all your hard work. Um, and then I also want to compliment, I, and I believe the compliments go to Dana for, you've just been doing an amazing job on what you're doing on Facebook. Um, the, the, the graphics, the marketing, it's just so professionally done and positive. And I see it on Instagram too, although I'm not a big Instagram person, but, um, I think everything looks amazing. So thank you for your hard work on that. Um, future agenda items, um, I have a, I have a list, but I would say for, we get a city manager report. Um, there's nothing urgent. If
From me, I have a couple of things.
Oh, yes, please, I'm sorry.
You were done, I'm sorry.
I am done.
Okay. The boom, the fairgrounds called and said they're having the boom box parade again this year.
Yes.
Are you, you know, you know, be in that one?
So
Yeah, okay. Um, so that is August twenty eighth, um, in the morning, I think around nine or so, they're here and they have a costume contest. Um, I haven't called Manicero, Manicero Insurance to see if they're running that again, but they usually do. And then you're all invited, um, August seventh, for our second annual Purple Heart Ceremony. Um, we have a amateur high school, um, drama student that's going to be singing for us. And I haven't heard back from the Boy Scouts troops to see if they're going to do our flag presentation, but, um.
I know someone. I'll make sure it's them.
Okay, thank you for that. And so we are in the process of planning that and getting that all set, but we want to be able to honor our Purple Heart veterans on that day. So it's a Sunday, so please make time in your calendars and you can be part of it however you want. Thank you.
Over flags.
Yeah.
Anything, staff, that you want to share?
And she's just like, what?
She's like, what, what?
Just want to give everybody an opportunity. Looking forward to next week. Okay. Okay, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.